September 10th, 2018, to order and recognize that we have eight items on tonight's agenda. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one this evening is approval of the minutes from the Licensing Board Regular Meeting of August 20th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number three is a temporary Class B beer license for Immaculate Conception Parish for the Fish Fry being held on October 26th, 2018, from 4:00 PM through 10:00 PM at Immaculate Conception Parish Gymnasium Parish Center and Concessions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number four is a temporary Class B beer license for Immaculate Conception Parish for the Fish Fry being held on March 8th, 2019, from 4:00 PM through 10:00 PM at Immaculate Conception Parish Gymnasium Parish Center and Concessions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Is that a prove aye or oppose aye?
It was a late approved.
Prove aye, alright, motion carries. Item five is a temporary Class B beer license for Immaculate Conception Parish for the Fish Fry being held on April 12th, 2019, from 4:00 PM through 10:00 PM at Immaculate Conception Parish Gymnasium Parish Center and Concessions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item six is approval of operators licenses with the list that's in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number three is a temporary Class B beer license for Immaculate Conception Parish for the Fish Fry being held on October 26th, 2018, from 4:00 PM through 10:00 PM at Immaculate Conception Parish Gymnasium Parish Center and Concessions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number three is a temporary Class B beer license for Immaculate Conception Parish for the Fish Fry being held on October 26th, 2018, from 4:00 PM through 10:00 PM at Immaculate Conception Parish Gymnasium Parish Center and Concessions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Is that a prove aye or oppose aye?
It was a late approved.
Prove aye, alright, motion carries. Item five is a temporary Class B beer license for Immaculate Conception Parish for the Fish Fry being held on April 12th, 2019, from 4:00 PM through 10:00 PM at Immaculate Conception Parish Gymnasium Parish Center and Concessions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item six is approval of operators licenses with the list that's in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item six is approval of operators licenses with the list that's in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item seven is appointment of Agent Nick Kalinsky, Texas Roadhouse Holdings LLC at 800 West Paradise Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. And item number eight is a secondhand article license for United States Cellular Operating Company LLC, US Cellular, 1323 West Paradise Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries and being no further business before the Licensing Board, I adjourn.
Thanks Craig, I would now like to call the Order of the Board of Public Works, we have five items on tonight's agenda, the first being the approval of the minutes of the meeting from August 20th.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Second item is the approval of long-term stormwater maintenance agreement for Maury's Honda dealership with a presentation by Max Marcel. Max?
Good evening, thank you. This is another one of those long-term stormwater maintenance agreements that the city enters into with property owners who are granted a stormwater management permit by the Engineering Department. This one is for Maury Honda who's proposing a new dealership at the southwest corner of West Washington Street and Scenic Drive West. This development includes 34,510 square foot building and all the developments with parking and grading and a stormwater management pond to control stormwater released from the property. It's basically our standard agreement with the specifics on their maintenance, their annual inspection and their annual report that they file with the city once they're granted the permit, so we would recommend approval of this agreement for this property.
Alright, thanks Max, does anyone have any questions for Max?
Motion approved.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Third item is a grant of privilege agreement for 2106 Sylvan Way. Max?
Thank you again, this is a grant of privilege that is requested by the property owner at 2106 Sylvan Way, there's an apartment building there and in order to alleviate some problems that they have with stormwater from their parking lot, they would like to discharge that stormwater through an underground pipe going under the sidewalk to discharge in the ditch along the road. So we drafted the agreement and we would like your approval of this grant of privilege to allow them to install those pipes.
Alright, thanks Max, anybody, Chris?
Max, I just want to say thank you to you and Doug who's not here because I know this stems from multiple questions and concerns we got from constituents over in that area, so just want to say thank you for doing that and putting this forward.
You're welcome.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
John, do you have a question?
I've got a question, Max, with all this heavy rain, I noticed that the ditch line took some beating or some washout, this isn't going to affect that at all, there isn't going to be that much water coming through that would cause problems down the road on that ditch line?
No, these pipes that are being installed will come to the side of the ditch and at the end of the pipes, they will have some riprap in order to break down the velocity of the water from the parking lot, so it shouldn't cause any erosion in the ditch.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, well I do have a motion and a second unless there's any more discussion. Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Item number four, grant of privilege agreement for 157 Woodridge Road.
Thank you again, this grant of privilege is for installation of a carriage walk, basically a walkway to connect the existing public sidewalk to the curb line and facilitate people leaving vehicles to reach the sidewalk and eventually the house at this property. Mike Bryant, the property owner, requested a grant of privilege to install this carriage walk, we've inspected the site and we would recommend approval of this grant of privilege.
Thanks Max, John?
This might be a question for Ian, Ian, since we're allowing all these approaches, if people use those across the street and something happens and don't use a crosswalk, by allowing us to give permission to do that, are we putting ourselves in a liability position?
No, I'm sorry. No, the purpose of the carriage walk is to access the right of way, so for instance, people who have an alley can park in front of the house and still be able to access their cars, so now if somebody crosses in the middle of a block, they're taking their own risk, that's not really increasing our risk.
Okay, thank you, then I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Fifth item is the discussion of the City of West Bend Bucket Truck, I believe, Chris?
Sure.
Comments on this? So I know we had some fun discussions about bucket trucks a few weeks ago, I took it upon myself, since I obviously am representing the county as well, to reach out to the county in regards to maybe any shared services we could do together in regards to a bucket truck, so I did find out that they do have one, I obviously didn't know the specifics, but they do have one, they use about 300 hours annually, and they did offer to rent it to us, as they do with some other entities as well, for $27 an hour if we needed it to fulfill any need, and so I don't know if this could be a potential full replacement of what we're looking for, or at least a partial maybe for some uses, but I just want to make sure that we had a discussion about it and we got everybody's opinion on it, if that's an offer we'd like to take.
Alright, thanks Chris, does anyone else want to interject?
I've also done some additional homework on the possibility of some alternatives to a bucket truck, Chris, my concern I guess with that thought would be if there's an emergency situation where if we need it, what are the chances that they also need it in that situation? So I guess that would be my first and foremost concern about shared services or shared equipment in that situation. Alternatively, I do believe that there's some good viable options for potentially leasing a vehicle or purchasing refurbished sort of vehicles that are guaranteed with a nice service plan or some sort of maintenance package directly from dealers, so I think there's some really good options out there, I'm not convinced that buying a new vehicle is the answer at the end of the day regardless.
Alright, thanks Mike, anybody else have anything? Steve?
Kind of agree with what Mike said, you know, I know it's expensive to buy a truck for, what was it, $200,000, if we could find something that's refurbished that meets state regulations or whatever we have to do, I think that would be good. Chris, I know what you're saying, but one of the problems I got with that too is, like Mike again said, is you know, what if it's an emergency situation, and the other thing that I was kind of thinking about is like when you borrow something from your buddy and you break it, who pays for it? You know, we're going to say, no, it broke before we had it, they're going to say, you broke it, and when it turns out to be a $10,000 fix, it's like, oh boy, so, it's just my two cents.
Could also be like when my buddies borrow stuff, you just never give it back, so maybe you got it on the bucket truck.
Well, if we can pull that one off, great.
There's the website. It sure sounds like we're singing the same tune or generally the same tune, appreciate you digging into it, and I'm assuming Craig Staff is, you're probably looking into things as, I'm sure it's not the only item on your plate, hopefully you're digging into it and let us know what you find out, there should be a combination of something, whether it's something with the county, something with a service contract, if a lot of our uses are similar type uses, is there a service contract that we can enter into, so I think there's plenty of options out there other than simply buying new.
I was just going to say, the county also has one, I'm sure they'd be happy to lend it or borrow it to us if we need it, I don't think they, they don't use it all the time, but...
That's why I brought it forward, I agree.
Alright, anything else? Well, if there's no further discussion, I will adjourn the Board of Public Works.
Thanks Andrew, I'd like to call the Finance Committee for September 10th to order, we have six items on the agenda, item number one is the minutes of the August 20th meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number two is the purchase of 2019, 2019 police vehicles, presentation by Chief Moeller.
Good evening, past couple years, this is a kind of request, although this year Ford moved it up again, date, so each year we have a rotation that we replace our vehicles with, we put in that same rotation for this next year, although the budget hasn't been approved, looks at least like the vehicle portion of it will be presented to council, that would be for three marked and one unmarked vehicle, we would be doing the Ford interceptor vehicles, by ordering this month, they will guarantee 2018 prices, it'll save us about between $3,550 and $6,000 if we order the cars now, rather than wait till the budget's approved.
If I remember, this is the third year or so in a row that this has happened, correct? So Jay, is this something that we could have Kerry look at for the budget for next year, maybe fixing it so we are...
Being more prospective with it?
Yes.
Is that your suggestion? Yeah, we can talk about it, I think part of that, we just have to be more precise with which vehicles the chief wants to replace 14 months out versus what we normally plan for, but yeah...
Because it should be a one-time shot, right, once we get it rectified, it would not fall into every...
We can talk about it.
Yeah, they've moved this up, when we first brought this at a council, I want to say it was like early November and they keep moving it each year, from talking to the Ford dealership, they do this because they want to do one run of all the law enforcement vehicles, rather than have to do a second run in the spring.
Motion approved, the chief's suggestion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Thanks Chief.
Thank you.
Item number three is a resolution increasing appropriations for fire department overtime, presentation by Chief Kudick, good evening Chief.
Good evening, you have before you a memo that details what we're asking for, in June of 2018, the Kettleman Sports Riders contracted with the West Bend Fire Department to provide two paramedics and a paramedic ambulance for their hill climb, and in July, the Trail Dog running, they had a, I believe it was a cross-country run event, and they requested a paramedic, so we contracted with them as well, once the bills are paid, that gets put into a revenue account, we're just asking to move the money out of that revenue account and back into the overtime salaries account.
Pretty straightforward.
Motion approved.
I have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks Chief. Item number four is a resolution authorizing the transfer of park funds for the Kenny Park Improvements, presentation by Craig Hepner, sorry Craig, forgot your name for a second.
That's okay, you didn't mention the bucket truck, so that's all good. Tonight, pretty simple, we're seeking to approve a transfer of $3,945 from our PARC Fund, which is Park and Recreation Capital, to an expense account, this was donations we received in memory of Janet Kane, she passed way back in May and they've raised almost $4,000, they put back into the park, so we plan on doing some improvements to the park yet this fall.
Excellent, thank you, and a thank you to those donors.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Thanks Craig. Item number five, award a 2019 fire engine contract to Reliant Fire Apparatus, Inc., welcome back Chief Kudick.
Yes, we have before you a request to award the contract, we put out for bids for the, actually in the 2018 and 2019 cap projects, we have $325,000 each year budgeted for a total of $650,000, we put it out on bid earlier this year, got two bids back, we did send it out to 10 vendors and only received two back, both of them came under bid, which is a good thing, and we're requesting tonight to award the contract to Reliant Fire Apparatus, which is a Pierce manufacturer, Reliant is out of Slingon, Wisconsin, Pierce, as you know, is out of Appleton, so it's kind of nice that it's local, like I said, it did come under bid, we did bid, or we did have a pre-estimate of $650,000, that included the equipment that is going to go on the truck as well, we're awarding the contract tonight without that loose equipment because we think we can get a better deal on that loose equipment if we bid it ourselves to various vendors.
Have you done that in the past where you've bid out the loose equipment, or is this kind of the first time you're doing that?
We did the last time we did it as well, but we need to put it in there originally so that we know how much we can expect to spend on the new truck.
Sounds good.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hey Craig?
I don't have the memo in my packet, I don't know if anybody else does, how much actually are we approving that we're spending?
The request is to enter into a contract not to exceed $650,000, that way if we did go back and buy the equipment through Pierce, that it could be added back into the contract, plus we don't have our final bid yet because we do a pre-construction meeting prior to signing the contract so that we don't have to do change orders at extended cost.
So if we're asking not to exceed 650, but we know we're under budget, what number did they give you?
We're currently at 589, 746.
Can we do not to exceed 600 grand, still gives you 11 grand with a leeway?
We're looking at spending probably 30 some thousand on equipment that goes on it.
So the 589 was not with all the loose equipment?
Correct, 589 is base, we still are trying to make up our mind if we're going to add $11,000 for the stainless steel body over the aluminum body, we did that on our last truck, we did the stainless steel to avoid the rust and corrosion issues, so that's another pre-bid item that we have to come up with.
So you're thinking, what did you say, the loose equipment's maybe 40 grand, 39?
Yeah, and then another 11 grand, if we do the stainless steel body, puts us at 640 plus.
Okay, alright. Okay. All right. At least we know generally the number.
Thought I'd get through without any questions, but you got me.
Well, I think it's a little, in a perfect world, I think we'd know the number we're approving. If we're saying not to exceed 650 and you're comfortable that we can get a 20-year vehicle for less than 650, then I'm comfortable with that.
Correct.
Thanks.
Yeah, if, the original bid came in at 618, they did a pre-discount of 15,000 for a $275,000 pre-discount. For some reason, there was a miscommunication between the 275 and the three and a quarter that we actually had to put down. So they gave us another $4,000 credit, so that put us at 598. We had a preliminary discussion about equip, or items that were going to add to the engine, and we deducted another 8,000. So the final contract price is 589, 746 without any of the equipment or the stainless body.
Yes Chris?
So just to be fair to parks, obviously this...
Pocket on this truck.
This sort of purchase, obviously doesn't happen too often. So when's the next time you see that we're gonna have to do a large purchase like this on a truck or anything else? As far as your department goes?
For this truck, 20 years. For the next upcoming truck...
So when is the next time that we're gonna need to do a purchase like this?
The aerial apparatus is a 1999 as well.
Okay. Do you have a projection of when you'd like that? Obviously you want it now, but...
But I also understand, so it'll probably have to, it's probably, an aerial apparatus is around a million dollars.
Yeah.
So obviously that's a two-year probably cap project item again.
Yeah.
So...
Okay. Thank you.
Yes Mike?
Chief, does this, does this sort of vehicle go under scrutiny of annual inspections as well? And has there been any indication that there's failures of any sort at this point on this vehicle that we're replacing?
It has annual pump testing, which is coming up. Maintenance has increased over the years. It's kind of an industry trend or industry standard that 20 years is the benchmark because of the, it goes through NFPA cycles. And after two NFPA cycles, there's numerous changes to the minimum requirements of fire apparatus. So 20 years takes us through two NFPA cycles.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes Craig?
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. It sounds like some of us have the memo and I didn't have the memo, which a lot of your question, a lot of my questions were answered in the memo, so sorry about that.
All right, I do have a motion and a second on this item. Being no further comments or questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
And item number six is a resolution accepting equipment donation from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation.
Yes, so instead of money going out, now money's coming in. Yes, we were awarded a $20,000 grant, it's actually a little over 20,000, from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. It's obviously the grant foundation for Firehouse Subs, which as you know, moved into town this year. With that money, we purchased a transport ventilator. So when we do in our facility transports, right now the individuals are, our paramedics are begging people that aren't breathing on their own all the way down to Milwaukee. Now we have a ventilator that will take care of that for them. Video laryngoscopes, I'm not even gonna go into that because Kyle will laugh if I explain how laryngoscopes work and things like that, but... And four D-Fib mounting brackets, we've got new D-Fibs and the current brackets didn't fit them, so we kind of cut away parts of them so that it would fit, which is not a real good idea. So we didn't have any money for the D-Fib bracket, so they, we got those as well through the grant. And if you're interested, they're having a big PR event on September 25th at Firehouse Subs as a PR event to give us that equipment. So that's very nice of them, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I think I did see that invite come through, so. A special thank you to Firehouse Subs for that one as well.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. And being no further business for the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
Thanks Rich. Like to call out City West Bend Common Council Meeting for Monday, September 10th, 2018 to order. Item number one is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 20th, 2018.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number two is a proclamation recognizing Kettle Marine Symphony's 50th anniversary. And it reads, whereas the Kettle Marine Symphony has been a valuable part of our community since its establishment in 1968 as the Marine Symphony Orchestra by the late Albert Ash. And whereas the Kettle Marine Symphony aspires to provide outstanding orchestral performances that engage the community and inspire and educate all ages. And whereas this season marks their 50th anniversary. Now therefore I, Craig K. Sedonico, Mayor of the City of West Bend, along with members of the Common Council hereby commend and congratulate the Kettle Marine Symphony for 50 years of community musical enrichment and designate the month of September to be Kettle Marine Symphony Month. And I encourage all citizens to support the symphony by celebrating and attending their 50th anniversary concert season, which kicks off Sunday, September 30th with Play Me A Story. Congratulations, thanks for attending ladies, and please pass along our thumbs up to the Kettle Marine Symphony. Symphony! And a great, great 50-year run. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Items number three through 15 are the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Under items for consideration is item 16, a cooperative service agreement with USDA Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services, the APHIS, Wildlife Services, WS. And do we have a presentation on this Jay?
Sure. I'll start and Alderman Butchler can jump in if, if need be. So the deer management committee met to review this agreement. If, if you recall, the, the thought process has been to contract with USDA AFIS to... APHIS. To remove up to 60 deer in this coming January season, so the winter of 2019 is when they would be removed from Lachlan and from Ridge Run Park. The, the agreement was reviewed. We did have the police chief and parks director review the document in advance. They both provided some feedback that we were able to incorporate and have some questions answered. We do believe this is a really cost-effective way to manage the herd in the city of West Bend. We are also applying for the grant. That was the second thing that was on the agenda for the August 27th meeting and was to just provide direction to review the grant requirements and encourage the city staff to apply for the grant. And the committee did do that. They recommended approval of this agreement to the council this evening. The grant is up to $5,000 or 50%. So in this case, we'd be applying for $4,500. You can see the total agreement of 9,000 from AFIS. They're federal employees, it's an entity that Dwayne Fran found for us as we were investigating how to deal with the deer management issue in West Bend. And it's one that I think a lot of people are excited about to try to remove some deer from tulips.
Thanks Jay. John, anything to add?
No, I think Jay covered everything. I'd like to especially thank the committee for putting a lot of work into this and especially Dwayne again for being able to find this for us and get this on the right road, right track.
Thanks John. My computer's still warming up here, pulling up that agenda packet, so this might be in the memo also. But it's maximum cost of $9,000, hopefully 4,500 directly out of city pockets. 60 deer total. Are the deer then donated? Or what, what happens to the deer? Again, it's probably in the packet.
I'm gonna let Jay answer that. He talked to Kip.
Yeah, so the deer donation program that we utilized last year when we harvested, were able to harvest three deer, isn't available for this program because it's not an individual that obtains the permit for the, for the deer that can then donate and have it processed. We're still working on that. The committee is still working, working on that and, and some alternatives that we'll be coming back with the council for.
Okay.
They'll be donated in some form or fashion, we're just not sure of all the details of it yet.
Gotcha. So the meat is not gonna go to waste?
Correct.
Perfect. Any other justice?
Yeah, that was, that was a huge question mark, because it does say within, funding within this agreement did not provide for deer processing, so the city will arrange for processing outside of this agreement. I, I hope we don't go ahead with this without figuring that part out.
I would just say that the, there's a subcommittee of the deer management committee that has agreed to pursue some alternative funding sources for the processing. It's not the intention of the deer management committees at all, any, any members that that would be added to the city costs. I understand your point, so I...
I don't mean offensive by that. I'm sure no one, no one's planning on wasting, wasting all that deer meat, you know? I mean, that could, that could easily go to a homeless shelter, something like that for sure. Yeah, that's it, I'm sorry.
Anybody else? Mike?
I'd just like to suggest that I, I will support this movement at this time. However, if this does not meet our satisfaction after this attempt, I strongly urge us to consider some other options. I think this is a pretty high mark. 60 deer is a, is a pretty steep goal. And I appreciate the efforts of the committee. And hopefully these folks are successful at what they do. But it seems like an awful lot of money and potential waste of resources to, to do this. And that would be my, I guess my opinion of it at this time.
Thanks Mike. Anybody else? Now entertain a motion on the item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
You know I will be opposed.
And that motion carries. Item number 17 is purchase of 2019 police vehicles.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 18 is award 2019 fire engine contract to Reliant Fire Apparatus.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And reports, under reports, item number 19 is a report by Alderman Jenkins regarding the library board meeting.
All right, it was a pretty short meeting. We just approved the 2019 library operating budget. The board didn't want me to extend a big thank you to staff and Jay, specifically you, for your cooperation with this year's budget. They thought it moved very efficiently and they were happy that the city and the library were able to get along great. So thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
One compliment?
That was it.
Awesome, that's great.
We should all, only we paddock ourselves in the background.
Any questions for Alderman Jenkins? All right, item 20 is a report by Adam Gitter, Bid Board Executive Director regarding the downtown bid board meeting. Good evening, Adam.
Hello. The bid board met September 4th on two items, the 2019 bid operating plan. They recommended and endorsed the operating plan that will be brought to you September And also on the Commons Project, they gave some recommendations and some feedback and taking that going forward.
Good deal. Any questions for Adam? Item 21, a report by Alderman Hugaster regarding Park and Rec Commission.
Okay, we met the last week of August and we started out with a tour of several projects and parks that are going on in the city. We started off with the River Walkway and all of the improvements that they've been doing. They're starting to put in the block to hold the, the bank back, but unfortunately Mother Nature had plans about flooding that out, so it's been on hold for a while. But looks like it's gonna be very interesting when it's done. Looks very nice. Went to Villa Park, we saw the shelter that were built, that was built by the neighbors and what they've kind of turned that park into. I remember when we first kind of put that park in, it was pretty much of a nuisance to the police department and to the neighbors because we were constantly having issues up there with kids and drugs and all kinds of other stuff. And the, between the effort with the police department, working on keeping it under control and the parents kind of deciding to take the park back, it's really turned out to be a nice park. And they took it upon themselves to build a shelter, so that was really nice. Down to Regner Park, saw the future of the baseball field, the fishing docks. While we were going past, I think it was the bath house, we saw six or seven deer standing on the path looking at us, so that was kind of interesting. Took a trip around Wind Gabe subdivision where they're doing the EAB stumping project. That's where they apparently have started, which makes some of my neighbors very happy. Went out to Quas Creek, took a look at the paint job they put on the building out there and took a tour around that park. And I hate to admit it, Chief, there's actually places in that park I've never seen before, so obviously I wasn't doing my job sometimes, not going to the right spots. And then we went out to Lachlan and saw some painting out there, some painting that they did out there. We had a presentation by a young man by the name of Ryan Gergitz. He is a, going for his Eagle Scout badge and he is currently building a shelter in Ridge Run Park to, what is the word I'm looking for? To satisfy what he has to do for that. Geo cashing was the first weekend in August. Apparently that was roaring success again. The swimming area at Regner Park is now closed. They said they had 18,000 visitors this year, which is up from the last couple of years. Let's see, what else? We looked at, I had Riverwalk Construction, I said that. That was basically about it. And then we thanked John Wagner, he's been on the commission for 24 years, and he has decided to step down and move on, so we thanked him for his service.
Thank you. Steve, any questions for Steve?
I'll just comment quick. I, I know Ryan Gergitz who had presented, presented to you guys, he's a, his family's a member of our church and I'm one of his merit badge counselors. He did a great fundraising effort to get that project that we're running at Ridge Run Park, so I'm, I'm really proud of him and I'm glad that you're showing that as well.
Jay and/or Craig, were they back under construction out there today on the Riverwalk? I didn't happen to take a drive-by. I saw the water was slowly receding or subsiding. They're still waiting on water getting down to pump out the inside and so they can be safely working in there, so. It was a nice dry July and early August. So hopefully that, we're still targeting that that's Thanksgiving, early fourth quarter kind of completion somewhere there. Super. Any other questions? John, item 22, did we handle the deer management committee update already or do you have something else to add?
No, I think we covered everything. Good job.
Thanks John. And item number 23 is entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. This is regarding 2100 Northwestern Avenue building update.
Slow move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Can you do a roll call vote, please Stephanie?
Alderman Butchler?
Aye.
Alderman Christian?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?[1702.71]
Aye.
Alderman Maddle?
Aye.
Alderman Kest?
Aye.
We're in closed session.
And we will be adjourning from closed session, so we're done here this evening. Have a great night, everyone.